Have you got it online?
Okay, it's recording.
Oh, really? Yeah. Control transportation.
Hi, sir. Oh, you're nominated.
We need to go. It's beautiful. I know where. We can do one over at the front with a bell signal. Well, mine. I have one. Well, actually, my one. My one. We had a little one. I thought maybe I asked one, but I don't have it. Or he said he was gonna.
Yeah, like, thank everybody coming, please. Door, please. We all please stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening everyone on this warm September evening. Um, start the meeting, um, after we go the agenda.
Second.
A discussion, 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 all favor with that.
Aye.
Okay, um, student outcome progress, you have anything there?
Yeah, we're working on the, uh, goals, we're hoping, you know, I know that we talked about getting goals to you by this date, uh, at the last meeting, but right now what we're, we're having to adjust that because there's a lot of I E Ps and things that the principals were having to work through, and I felt like we were overloading the principals, and I really, their time, their time would be better, uh, spent attending to getting the year started well. And then we plan to have our, uh, written goals to you with data informed written goals by October thirtieth in writing, and then we can approve it in November. So just so you're aware of that timeline, I did talk to board leadership just about my concerns of putting so much on the principals with those data goals. It is already informing our decisions though, because, you know, your choice ready goal, you know, we put in quite a, quite a request on the choice ready grant, it informs that. We're already spending quite a bit of time on reading and looking at our grants for that, so it's not that we don't know the general goals that you have, it's that we're trying to get the specific data measures that, and with a five-year goal, and rather than rush that in the thirty days, uh, if it's a five-year goal, maybe take another forty days to make sure that the five-year goal is data informed for the board. So just so you're aware of that timeline of what we're operating on.
That's really tough question. Will they approach to have the goals, will they kind of approach the goals before you discover the term or whatever that makes?
Um, we need to actually go through the data to be able to give you informed numbers. So they don't, principals haven't had the time to go through all of those data measures to... So rather than rush them through it, we had a couple meetings scheduled, but again, there was I E P conflicts, and that's what I said, you know, we need to just back off on trying to dumb, I don't want to say dumb, because it's important work, but trying to force this onto them, and that's what I talked to board leadership.
Okay, great, okay. Okay, um, consent agenda, voting to accept everything on this consent agenda. Okay, probably move in second that we can, um, make a motion to consent, uh, A two H. A discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I, the test suggests, think we should either do this properly or stop it. We, we, we are not following open meetings record, the rules at all. Those questions that were sent, and I don't know if any of you sent, but I know I sent twenty. And the answers that I got were not posted, and that is not proper. I, 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 just because we have this, this, uh, piece of paper, that this is not supersede law. I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but the, I, I was explaining that, that the way this works is that people could ask questions, not just the board, the community too, but the information is not posted online. It's law that when the board gives the agenda, but it's supposed to be posted, it's not. So I think we have to rethink this, because either we need to do it right, or we need to stop it. And I have lots of questions that haven't been answered on this stuff, and in fact, um, I, as I commented, policy F E D C is not supposed to be on here, but it still is.
I did look into that. You can ask me. At, um, at our meeting, I had a had a policy meeting, first of all, back in August, I had written down that we were okay that F E passed F E D C, it was just that F E D C or A R that we wanted to look at. And then I wasn't sure, and then I looked at the minutes that we passed last month, and he had that typed in there that F E D C, um, committee will discuss policy, F E D C, and then said the committee also passes F E D C to the board for the meeting. I, I went back, I pulled out our minutes that we made last month. That was my notes on our policy meeting, my sheet was F E D C was okay, but it was the F E D C A R that we were going to look at.
But it started doing like a, like two of them together, I don't know what we talked.
But it was the A Rs.
I think the two of them together.
Right, A Rs, not the F, not the policy, it was B. That's what I had written down in my notes from that day, so, and then I I pulled out our minutes that he had given to us the last month, so we, whatever, we can change it, we can say that's what we approved, where it's having to be.
It's the senior privileges policy, we state that.
Okay, well, I, anybody else have, I, maybe we just need to, um, satisfy the, um, things that we, uh, break, we can just go through it automatically, let's just do that, let's start with the open, let's approve the board regular meetings of August fourteenth, is that a motion to accept the board meetings of August fourteenth? Second? Uh, a discussion, discussion, discussion. All favor of approving the board meetings of August fourteenth, please say aye. Okay, and the only other minute I have was at the building transportation committee agenda, that you had on August twenty-fourth, motion to accept that, please. Second? Discussion, 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 all favor of accepting the motion, um, for the building transportation, we say aye. Okay, I mean, a motion to pay bills.
Move to pay the bills.
Second? Okay, questions and bills? Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a, when I've gotten, and so we just wanted to follow along with the first. Um, page two, advanced business, business methods, I'm not questioning them exactly, I'm questioning whether those issues are giving pace, because we're paying a lot of money and having endless, endless issues, so that was my question.
Advanced Business Methods was there the day I was up to, and, um, not, last number, it was the month before, and I was there with them. Um, they, we did, we ran multiple tests on the printer system at the elementary school. Uh, we found that if it was sending and receiving, we did, it was not able to, it was a, it was a queue issue, it was our network issue, so we passed off, I put a ticket in with Armor, and then Armor went and worked on it, eventually, I think we kept, because, uh, they didn't, it took a little bit, and finally, I think we got it straightened out, in fact, I went there a couple times this week, used the printer system multiple times, my code worked, everything worked. So if there is further issue, please let me know. Okay, so.
Um, second question is, um, do you strictly want us to check the exact thing amount? Um, is that what you're asking, is that what you're asking, did you find that?
I'm still looking at it, I haven't found yet.
It's two fifty dollars.
I think she means the bottom is two and top is three.
Yep.
Amara, right.
Oh, oh, okay, I see.
And also, so I have questions on the Google, or on the license, because there are several different ones, one's, one's, and, um, that one, one for two armor, that's Google Chrome license, one through, that's on the four. One through, uh, on page twenty-eight, no, sorry, on page twenty-nine, another four of them, two trees. And on page twenty-eight, support warehouse, so they're all like licensed, and I don't remember if they, just when they licensed.
Two trees and staff laptops, support warehouses, service to laptops.
And we, that, those staff laptops are still good on the two trees later, because it's.
I have to ask very well on that, I don't know too much into it. I'll ask her again, any other deeper questions you have about it, but that's, that's what we got there, when I, when I had a chat with her about the question of what the, of what the word.
Okay.
Security for the staff laptops.
I have a question, pardon? Page fourteen, I don't think, does, does one should have that?
Yeah, she answered two, and I was gonna, I forgot to ask Mike that, did you make sure of this?
Yeah, they have a percentage of that, reason that it's, we're at ten thousand one, one hundred, and that's for the football field and the, and the gym. And, yeah, dozens, dozens of them have a percentage of, they were, they were going to put it in, and I told you, don't, don't, don't install it, just use the portable for the games over there, it's no sense, both, both schools in Kariba. That's pretty much what every school is going to, you know, for everything, all the coaches can, you know, then half hour, forty minutes of a game that's shared. And, yeah, it's, it's, it's expensive, we're still trying to find ways to sell advertising on it, try to recoup some money back, but how many times can we keep hitting people, and that's the, that's the type of, I use it. Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it's nice, but it's, we have H S still viewing, that we have. When people pay to use that, we get a rebate, we have one, I just got email, I didn't say when the check comes in, but I just wanted to know, it's typically maybe a quarter, we get maybe a hundred and twenty dollars, and we don't.
At the H S.
Yeah, at the H S.
That's different.
Yes, it is, it's, it's not, uh, you know, sharing, there's no sharing, it's just reviewing, so it's, you know, through. They make it on their subscriptions, when they sell you ten dollars an hour to every person.
And we can probably put this on, like, the end of the year, when we get, let me do the share by the numbers, it's just a ratio.
It, uh, last year's, Lisa missed it, she didn't put it on, and, um, I reminded her that we gotta, you know, put it on this year, so, but she didn't do, well, she didn't do the stuff, we, that's what Zane and I are working on, so. But yeah, it'll be a percentage, and that'll be, what did he figure out?
Yeah.
More discussion or not?
Yeah. Um, on page ten, Ellen has written down, so the new legislature is in a list of grants, and I did ask, saying, well, this can be listed, and, um, the two thousand dollars is lost, um, something happened. Put in for the reimbursement, yeah, so, or the back end reimbursement, I think it was two and two.
That was one.
Um, given this twelve and thirty-one, um, there's three checks for the Santa mall, for hotel mess, for F C C L A. Is that enough, if that, that's what we're making up?
Yeah, the only reason it's like that was because I, I had, uh, I found out, and I forgot to void one, so it's going to be now.
Yes, one's seven, okay.
The one in thirty-one is voided.
Yeah, it was just that I had voided one, because when I messed it up, I put it in, and I just left it out, voided, so, so it's, it's voided now, so don't worry about that.
Well, that's one special question. Um, this is maybe a question from the transportation lady, but page twenty-three, Tom Spire, I don't mind us, I, uh, there was taking out the tires.
I think you just. Just a state bid.
Yeah.
It's a state bid, so you, you, there's no sense to bid about, the state will give us the bid and say, this is what it is, nobody's ever, you've never bid off tires before.
The tire labor.
Yeah, the tire labor at Dale's, when the state bid is, the state sets the money, you can't touch the tires, and we can't, we have, we can only buy tires that are listed by the school, like, employee can't say, hey, can I get tires on the state bid? Can't, it's, tires on the state bid, and that price will be out, and it will be, Dale changes them, he does it, and in turn, he gets the casing, if it's a, a bad casing or something, that's his labor.
Do not come for him.
No, tires don't, oh, he, he is a handler for the tires for the state bid, so that, you know, he, it really doesn't do,
Gets a little handling, right?
He gets something, it doesn't really do much for him though, but, you know, and then he gets, then, like, if we have something go wrong,
hope that something drops, and then he can go through it.
So he gets the labor.
He do the labor, yeah.
Okay. Um, Ellen. I have no other questions, page forty, I think American Department, would we all need to register before we pass that section?
Um, that, that one, I, uh, I don't know if I got it twice, but he came to me and was like, you know, pay this when it's, when it's finished, so I printed out the check, and I had it sitting there like we're supposed to, but now I see that, I, I might have just went ahead and paid it the second time, I actually, not for a second time, I haven't sent the check for the first time, I've only gotten the same as once, but I might have not realized it would have hit the sin, if I got the bill the second time, and my, so the entry would have been, I just didn't know that, I don't know if it's completed, but.
I, I did not get confirmation from Travis, when I was in the school the other day, we were actually in an I E P, and I said, have you completed the work? Uh, text said, no, he had not completed the work, we have at least a day or two left. I have not heard from Travis that it was completed, I, I understand why he wouldn't have contacted me if he already had payment. Um, I can get in touch with Travis right away to make sure that it's completed.
Okay, good. All right. Question, 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 all favor of paying the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now of approval, first reading of, of, um, student rights and responsibilities.
Second.
Okay, um, it is, come over in second, this is just the first reading of student rights responsibilities, discussion? Discussion, discussion, all favor, please say aye. They approve for the first reading, next one's to pull off the first reading of, of the senior privileges. Motion?
I don't, I'll make a motion to approve the F E D C.
Okay, F E D C, senior privileges, okay? Um, second, okay, discussion?
I was hoping we could do the, the F E D C and the F E D C A Rs together, but, well, I also, other than A Rs, aren't policy digits, administration regulations, there's a guideline, I think, and they're not part of the actual, uh, so, but we can kind of help out with the next, we still have that down, do it in the next policy, with the A Rs, if that's what they were.
Okay, first reading, any more discussion? Discussion, discussion, all favor of the, of, of accepting the first reading of F E D C, please say aye. All opposed, motion passes, approval of certificate levy. Second?
Second.
Uh, probably move in second, we have a certificate levy, discussion?
Any votes?
No.
Okay, any more discussion, 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 all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number F, approval of the local education agency directory, M I S O one, motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion, discussion?
A lot of the, the, you remember, really came back to show us, but I, I did, I asked, like, why don't we, you know, because it's always done, you know, the levy that we have approved, and now we want to, but, but the thought I got was that he just wanted us to make sure that we could see everything.
Okay?
I didn't make one of them, I, I wouldn't.
Okay, good, good point, any more discussion, 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 all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, next is approval of the M I S O two school directory.
Second.
Discussion, 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 all those in favor of the approval of the M I S O two school directory, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of enrollment of those people. The motion? The second?
Second.
And we can discuss this, correct? And we can discuss that, so, all those in favor, please say aye.
This is on the.
I don't believe we can discuss it, I don't think. Okay, you have a question you want to add?
I, I'm just, I'm just confused by it, because I saw open enrollment areas in this culture, and I, I know that was kind of being a response, but I, I don't, I thought I had a friend here who just tuitioned way near, so.
We issued a tuition waiver tomorrow to the districts for the open enrollments, we have been, we don't have.
I thought we were past the week.
You have a choice, you always have a choice, but the, um, they, 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 I mean, these students have been here for years, we just didn't have the documentation for open enrollments, and some have been here since kindergarten that are juniors maybe, uh, the one manos, potentially, and we just, you can't issue a tuition contract to get the expenses for special education without having this proper documentation in place. So your, your budget had about twenty-five thousand revenue tuition contracts and/or the lone tree special education unit, uh, dissolution, so, I mean, if you, if you don't put this in place, then you can't issue the contracts for the I E Ps.
Okay, so, I, I, I can't call discussion, so all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? All right, next thing we have, the survey by Spencer Marshawn, I'm going to read this, what has, um, been told me by our lawyer. "The survey was discussed a few months ago, was an option by the board, and the board found to work with the be legendary program to see how best accomplished that. Nothing was finalized or approved by the board, a teacher approved, uh, talks being about the survey, I had no idea, but learned Spencer created survey on his own instead of the H E president to share with the staff. I realize Spencer's heart may have been in the right place, we need to act as a board, not as the individual party. This was not a board approved survey. That being said, since the survey has been done, we received an open records request for it, the school district attorney then reviewed the documents and shared them per open records file. All four members have also begun to copy the survey results. We want to thank the staff that filled out the survey, we will continue to work as be legendary, and try to work together and improve our school district. Attorney recommended the board not discuss results, since it could violate students' due process rights. The board is responsible for evaluating the superintendent, but there are policies and procedures we need to follow when dealing with complaints or concerns to get the superintendent. That includes a board investigation, which I will do, and I will talk to the superintendent about the survey. And if I find any action recommended, I, I, from that investigation, I'll bring them to rest of the board. Attorney recommended no further discussion on this item at this time, and we need to work as a board to come up with a survey that will meet our standard needs." Okay, with that, I want to move on. I want to move on to opening bids, we'll start with Cole.
So Cole, I, I had one that I stored from then, then he brought one in.
Cole Hawley.
Yeah, Cole Hawley, but it's not my stack, which is fine, so we'll call him, and we'll call for it again, and we'll get that right, and we'll get him on there. Yeah, because I believe he's in place. Well, he sent one a couple months ago, and I don't really remember that, but then I called him a week ago or something, and he brought one in, and then I had it all on my stack, not there. So anyway, we'll get him on there, we'll make it right, we'll get him on there. Um, so we go and have a list, and we got fuel oil, heating.
Of course.
Coal, coal, okay, so the coal mine, coal mine is currently under, um, maintenance, there's only one mine that provides coal for heating and, heating right now, and so we have to make a motion to recall bids, because as we talk, I talked to Nick indicated, I do believe he said it in place. I think I handled the first one, and I turned it in and said, we'll leave that in August, I didn't know, sent the second one, but I do know that we requested a second one, and I believe he said he was going to.
Yeah, no, he gave it to me, I just, it's not my stack, so it might be in my office somewhere, but it's just a mistake, so we'll, we'll get him on there.
So what do we need to do here?
So we need to call for bids on the coal again.
Do you have a motion to call for bids on coal again?
Yeah.
Second? Discussion, 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 all favor of calling for bids on coal again, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, how about Cole Hawley?
Um, was he, was he Cole Hawley or Cole?
Nick is Cole Hawley.
Okay, so.
You just, you just call for bid to be accepted at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, Cole Hawley as well?
Yep.
Yeah.
You can postpone definitely, go on the next meeting.
Okay, and that, what that means, um, a lot of that to come up at the next meeting. Um, probably move in second, that we postpone that definitely, discussion, 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 all favor? Spencer? All favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Okay, okay, now you go, fuel, um, you got a bid for that?
Yeah, we have one for, uh, three through seven here, so we have fuel oil meeting, um, this is Harvey Oil Company, uh, this is their steel bid for delivery of heating fuel during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Harvey Oil Company proposes a bid of twenty cents off the current rack price at the refinery. Delivery will be made as needed by call, the bid includes applicable taxes.
You have the only bid we have?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, would you have a motion to accept that bid?
Move.
Second? Okay, we have a motion to accept the bid, and whistle again? Harvey Oil, we have a motion to accept the bid for Harvey Oil for heating. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, okay, fuel diesel and gas, I bet you got two there.
I don't, I have one. I have one for diesel and gas.
Really?
I handed it to them, and reminded them, both.
It's also Harvey Oil Company. They propose twenty cents off the current pump price, delivery will be, uh, made as needed, include taxes. It's, it's copied and pasted from their last one, but it's twenty cents off the current pump price.
Okay, well, if that's the only bid, I guess I would accept the motion to accept them. Second? Okay, discussion, 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 all favor of accepting Harvey Oil, um, twenty cents off price, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, transportation maintenance?
Okay, we have two for this one.
Okay.
So, first one is for Patzer Truck and Repair, uh, Patzer, um, is grateful for the opportunity to bid for the transportation maintenance, um, this is their bid proposal, uh, in shop rate, um, in shop rate, your shop, it's tough, sorry, tech, oh, in shop rate of one twenty-five an hour, uh, service call or out of shop rate at one forty-five an hour, uh, towing hauling rate would be ten dollars loaded per mile plus hourly rate of service call. Uh, services would be in fact, in effect, seven through six, I can read it again. Like, right. Let me read you.
No, I think.
I think everybody got it, why don't you read the other one, then we got to ask you to go back. I think everybody, why don't you read the other one, then we got to ask you to go back.
Alright, so this one's from PNF Repair. Uh, the transportation maintenance bid for them is a labor rate of one-twenty per hour.
Oh, what?
One-twenty per hour. It, it just says labor rate is one, one-twenty per hour. Uh, after hours and out-of-town service call labor rate is one-forty. They want us to know that they also carry bulk DEF. Or DEF. So, we've got, uh, in-shop rate of one-twenty-five for Patsir and one-twenty for PNF. We've got a out-of-shop rate at one-forty-five for Patsir and one-forty for PNF.
They don't mention anything about towing and hauling?
Uh, PNF does not, it, it just, I read, I read it to you word for word. So, it just a labor rate.
Does the Patsir rate only say six to seven and low after hours?
These services would be in effect Monday through Friday, seven a.m. to six p.m. as passive. PNF, they do not have a time slot on their bid.
And they do have an after hours?
It, it does say after hours slash out-of-town service call rate is one-forty, but they haven't given time. So, on one, you have a little, you know, it's a little bit less per hour, but they're not as much in detail, so. So, so we have, it's five dollars less an hour for each at, uh, PNF.
There's no limit, there's no limit on when you can call them, you can call them on that.
Well, I guess so, I, obviously, I don't know.
If the wrestling team gets stuck in Buella, you might be able to give them a call and they'll help you. That would be my question if they were here, is if that seven to six, like with Patsirs, like if we had a bus breakdown, going back from a football game at eleven p.m., are they just saying, you know, we can't do that, or, I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, right, it just says, the services would be.
Mike, you have a recommendation?
If I can.
Yeah, you're, 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 you're the active research director, so I guess I, I would, I think we should listen to you.
Well, the, the death thing is, we have two, two buses for death, and they don't carry bulk, that's, that's, that, that's good. I mean, this will go up there otherwise now they're carrying P L and sales in and dumping in when we need it, you know, which is logic. They're, you know, Patsirs are a great, great place, they're very busy. Bikes, has a real, bike has a real good mechanic. I would prefer bike. I, I mean, just working easier, I, I feel, um, working.
I call Donovan Mike as the executive director, but he's also transportation director, so that, he should have a little bit of say in this. So, um, I, I appreciate his wisdom. Um, building our transportation committee, you guys have anything to say?
I just, I, I have only good things to say about both businesses, but I think, you know, in the bid here, I think, uh, especially with the clarity of, it, from what I can understand, it, it sounds clear to me that, like, the PNF bid, if we had a breakdown after those hours, they would, they would be willing to do. I just want, that's what I want to be sure on, I think that's a big deal for us.
I, I worked with them, it was Sunday afternoon, I got a phone call from someplace in Manitoba. And they somehow got my name, bus had broke down up at Prairie Towers, it was a charter bus holding at college. And they asked if we could, you know, call, come out and get them and take them to a cobblestone. And I got out there, and two of Flakes' men were out trying to diagnose and get that bus running for them. And they had everything, you know, they could diagnose at the fans. They, they couldn't tear into it, they couldn't haul it to their shop, but these people chose to have it haul to business. They were there on Sunday afternoons, so.
Okay, before we discuss much more, we should have a motion to accept one of these. Is there a second? Okay, the motion is to make to accept PNF repair, the stated things have been read off, um, at the, at the prices. Um, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor of, of accepting the bid for PNF repair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, alright, um, tires? Tires labor, tires labor, and I'm glad we made that. How that we all understand now.
You can only get to clarify, you can get state tires from hiring dinner Minot, same price either way, you just happen to get it through Minot.
Okay, so we have Dale's radiator and repair. They say, you know, they're giving twenty-six per tire for replacement or repair plus supplies. Uh, tires are state bid price, and that is all.
Okay, any other bids?
That's it.
Okay, I would, uh, entertain a motion to accept the Dale's repair bid. Second? Discussion, discussion, all in favor of accepting Dale's repair bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, plumbing and heating.
This, uh, was something that part came up from the building committee, and it was approved in the minutes. We need to get a bid for putting in a dehumidifier in the weight room as well as a water heater in the high school lunchroom. Um, the water heater broke last spring, and so, we had been, we've been waiting on it, um, to get into this bu- billing cycle instead of last billing cycle, the budget. For fall, and, um, so, this came forward through the building committee, and we did get a bid.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so we have, um, like, like he said from Keller. Uh, the project is water heater installation in the high school kitchen, uh, dehumidifier installation in the high school weight room. Um, the cost breakdown of the water heater installation, uh, the unit itself is forty-six hundred. Uh, parts and labor is about thir- uh, three thousand three hundred thirteen, so that brings the total cost to seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. The dehumidifier project, uh, the unit itself is twenty-four hundred, parts and labor is nineteen hundred, so it's, uh, forty-three hundred in total. So, the bid amount here for, um, Gary and his team is twelve thousand two hundred thirteen.
Okay, um, is there any other bids?
This is it.
Okay, so, I'm gonna do it the way you should do it, I want a, a motion to accept this, and second, and then we'll discuss it if, if we should pay for it. So, is there a motion to pay for this? Okay, second, alright, now let's, again, um, Dan, give me the total price one more time, please.
Yep, sure, twelve thousand two hundred thirteen.
That's for, that's for both?
That's for both, that's for both plans.
Break that down, break it down. How much for the water heater and?
Uh, water heater is seventy-nine thirteen, seven thousand nine hundred thirteen, dehumidifier was forty-three hundred.
Okay, now let's have discussion.
He stated that if it comes in lower, it will be lower.
Well, it's good, it's a, it's a, it could have got, you know, little dehumidifiers, wrestling room was discovered there's water coming up underneath, through the, through the cementing floors, and underneath the mats, and we were having mold issues. So, I don't remember exactly, there were small ones for.
So, the, the, when Gary came in, we had two options, we could do non-commercial one, but then you have to make sure somebody empty them two times a day at least. Or you could do a commercial one, it drains out, it takes care of it all year round, you can run it year round, it doesn't have to be baby set, um. And it's been with the humidity in the air, with getting trapped between mats that protect the cement in the weight from the equipment, and the cemented block is building up moisture, and it happened year round, we just, uh, did in there and doors opened and doors, and just. It's a commercial unit that was run.
And you won't think this is the way to go. And we're talking about the safety of our children too here, so.
That's, I don't know.
Um, when I hear this mold thing, we can do something that, that's, we need to re-concern about the safety of our children.
You know, we, we know, it's, I mean, I know in talk of when it was built, it pumps a lot of water while they were pouring the water, you see it. Because water was filling up all kinds of areas, it pumps a lot of water. Right, that's, that's what I think. Going forward, that's something that the building, that they have to look at is styling, you know, some French drain, something to keep pushing that, getting that water out of here. Because it's, that, this area is going to just, it's just gonna fill up, and, and there's going to be more problems, but. It's, um, you walk in that room, and it's like walking into a, and it gets clean. I mean, we changed how the janitors work, and they clean that room daily, and it's just a hot sauna, and we haven't started wrestling, so.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? Any more discussion? So, I'm calling for a motion to accept this, so we'll be accepting a bid for the, for both, W nine thirteen thirty-three, thirty-three, accept the bid for both. Opposed in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion cares, we'll accept Keller's bid. Okay, let's hope, did we get a wheelchair lift bid?
No, I did, I sent, uh, bids to every listed contractor in Dakota, um, and asked, and very detailed. I looked at the others outlining what we wanted to do, I spoke to many of them on the phone. You know, I talked about how this could probably be a Christmas project or something to get done, or when we're out of the school, or whenever we can get it done. Um, we did not, so I would recommend at least you call for bids at least one more time.
I, I would entertain a motion to call for bids.
I would move that.
More the longer time. Okay, second? Okay, um, we're gonna call for another bid on wheelchair lift and keep working at that, everybody, um, building committee, do you have ideas? Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. Go ahead.
It was all the contract. All the twenty, twenty-five in the area, and then I mailed it all off.
Do you know of anybody that has done this?
Animals is doing a project similar to this, they have a teacher that is, um, wheelchair bound, and they're struggling as well. Um, they think they found, I found out today that they think they found someone who will sell a lift, but it's not the lift that we're talking about, so that's why I said at least one more time, because then you're looking at a different, whole different structure, you're looking at storing something, you're looking at, you know, a movable thing that runs in and out. So, like, it's a different idea than just having a lift up to the stage so someone can take part on the stage, it could be someone, would be something you're rolling around the school. Um, that would come up in front of the stage only in certain times, and so that's why I was saying we try to push the project as it's so intrusive. You know, I guess if we had trouble locally, I mean, pushing something to like a state buy, but, you know, I would still, this is on the local, you know, but we started with the local repair, and. Well, there, there's a lot of different lifts, the one that we were looking at or talking about with contractors was a lift that could lift old up out of the way, and the stairs could be so usable, and then could be brought back down, um, for those who need assistance up the stairs. Um, and then, you know, the, the one that I've been talking with, uh, it'd be the Drake School. They're talking about like an elevator style lift, so, you know, for us, that would be quite intrusive, we have to, now it takes, it's a big project, you're gonna have to build that whole staircase on the side. Um, create an elevator, um, which would be moving a whole lot of stuff. If you call, I mean, we tried to do that locally, if you call for bid, we expand it out, we didn't have it up locally.
Okay, um, the motion and authority is that.
Yeah, we, we, we tried locally, we didn't get a bid for local, so, we can just expand it out outside the local.
Okay, we have a bid on the table, right?
Yeah.
And, and we're gonna just add to that, we're gonna expand our horizons with that bid? Okay, any more discussion? Any more discussion? Any more discussion, all in favor of, of putting out again and expanding our horizons, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Motion pass. Okay, standing on a fourteen passenger bus overhaul. Okay?
We wanna, you, I. I knew that we'd call up for bid on that, if you wanna, Mike, if you want to explain what we're doing there. I, it, I think we should do it.
That, um, yeah, that, it's actually a twenty passenger, but we can, Harlow's can certify it, take out seats and certify it for fourteen. The engine is blown out, everything else is good. Currently, I have a quote for thirteen thousand dollars for new motors and install. I've looked back to the quote, didn't tell me taking it out. I gotta make sure they put that in, and that was, you know, what was talked about, but, that we can put another, I can call another place and get another quote on the same thing. So, I, I mean, I'm, it was less than thirteen what they're calling, they just wanted to be just regular.
So, we, we just have, at this size of project, you gotta call for bid, but, yeah.
But that's the.
And the, and the idea is to make it a fourteen passenger bus, so that everybody can drive it.
Make it a fourteen, where anybody can drive it, it could, it could help us on our bus route, we could, um, have the Martin and Anamos pick up the highway miles, we can have anybody driving it, and currently, on that route, there's thirty-seven, well, there's more than that, there's thirty-seven possibly to pick up, of course, some of them are driving in now, um, not going to all those stops, we're having people meet at stops, there's a stop I picked up ten, um, so, it would be, you know, make it a more normal bus routes. But, but having that fourteen passenger, definitely.
Okay, so I'm hearing the best thing here is you would call for, uh, a motion to, uh, call for bids on this, so.
I made that.
Okay, so, tell me, what, what's your bid is, what's your motion is?
Uh, the call up for bids to, uh, do overhaul on a twenty passenger bus, certify it as a fourteen passenger.
That's what I want to hear. Okay, second? Okay, any discussion? Discussion, discussion, okay, the bid is, the bid is to, um, reach out to fix this twenty passenger bus, but convert it to a fourteen, and get the engine overhauled, okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, now we'll move into the report section. Dr. Martin, you're first.
Yeah, I believe, uh, usually when school starts, I have a staff member come in and speak. Are you, are you available? Yeah, yeah?
Yes.
Yes, um, so we have Cole Armstrong to come in and speak about, uh, homecoming. And then also my reports were online, submitted. Also, the yearly financials report was online. If you have questions, please say aye. Yeah?
So it's homecoming week and hopefully you have all seen the many posts. And we have, um, a little cheer challenge going on on Facebook, so if you haven't seen that, you should check it out. So today we challenged the elementary school to cheer. Friday's the big day, so, um, we've changed things up a little bit. Last year, we started having the powder puff over at the, the, um, football field. So this year, Mr. Haas gave us permission to play all day and we're gonna start at nine A M with powder puff. And the girls are super pumped and so we have, they've been practicing in gym this week too, learning to play, um, powder puff football. So our, what are they called? Would you play? Play football? Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, I watch a lot of football. Um, so anyway, we have some cool prizes like MVP. It's a water bottle and, um, the guys, I had a couple of boys say that they wanted championship rings. So I ordered them some big championship rings. And, yeah, so we're just having a lot of fun with it. And then, of course, um, we have the games, um, the fifth and sixth is gonna come all walk over and watch the powder puff. So I, hopefully they'll like that. I told them they can make some posters and cheer for their team and, so, yeah, it's gonna be an awesome day. Um, pep rally will be at two with the parade before that and we have some gifts and all the good traditions for homecoming.
And the marching line.
Olympics were in and out of the school.
Yes, yeah, so today was Olympics Day. Um, tomorrow's Uptown Downtown. Uh, we'll see what we get for Uptown Downtown. Yeah, they always come up with pretty good things. And the elementary thing has had some different days. They have hat day and superhero princess day and, yeah. Hopefully they can have some points too.
And student council is probably.
Yep, student council is, is in charge of all that. And, um, I have, we have an excellent president this year. And I'm not just saying that because her mom and dad are here, but she has been shaking her tail feather and, um, has all her ducks in a row, um, so they've really done a nice job this year being organized. So Friday, we'll see all their hard work come to fruition. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I'm gonna see the spirit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Any comments, Dr.?
So that would conclude my superintendent's report. Uh, obviously, it's online. And, uh, yeah. I ask though that when you're done with all of their reports that you go to accept them, if that's possible.
Okay, so, um, we have a motion to accept superintendent's report? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor of accepting superintendent's report, please say aye.
Aye. Are we supposed to, were we supposed to get that? What, is that like a? You're usually supposed to.
I said after all of them were done, but he did it after mine, so that's fine.
Oh, I'm very well.
No, he, no, you were on top of it.
Okay, so we're going to hear from Dr. Harding. I watched up today. I thought that was pretty awesome. So do you, or anything else you wanna ask?
No, I don't have anything to add or think. I just, I just wanna say I think I agree with you when it comes to that contest. It just doesn't make sense how this can be that and stars is like they're doing good and, and I do see the change. They get a test one day and they do it yet. Stars, you know, you guys do it so often, that you definitely. And they both have, and they both have different purposes. You know, the stars more of a progress monitoring where the others more. And I think if they see more, you know, students, it's really struggling or something more or whatever. I, I mean, I agree with, like. And, and the goal is for that to guide our instructional practices. That starts at the, where, where we see kids that are needing some, some work or needing some assistance and that would, it's starting really good at indicating this is where they're at, this is what they need, this is what they're ready. And of course, we do have to take into consideration that it's just one day too, but you can tell if there's a trend or if there's, you know, if this is a score that's just an outlier, if they're not accurate, you know, all these things. And teachers know too what their students are doing, so this is, you know, that would just be one or two pieces of information. And I also just wanna make sure I know you really talk about it, because I, I wanna recommend the elementary staff or, um, team-based model.
Like the lead teaching or whatever, yeah.
I'm really excited about that.
And there's like a grant?
Probably. Well, so we're just looking to ask, and I know Dr. Booth has, has shared with us that he, you know, had, had a conversation too with people out of the state, but there's, there's possibly some money at this place and actually when we talked to the owner of the institution, um, that, right, when I lived with it, he thought there might be some funds available, like it's to send these people to community and send a team out to. So there might be some funds through them, but then we're looking at funds, like can we open up that, that one classroom to start with? That, you know, when we've had these big numbers in small classrooms, that's the biggest benefit of, you know, the space. So if we could put a hole in the wall, open up those two classrooms, because they're side by side, that would be a big huge benefit. It would really create a lot more space for that, bringing the whole class together and then letting them work, split up, work out in groups. And you're all in, although we have coverage, they can all see each other and they're all working there, you know, and stand on top of it. And then they can easily move back and forth and not need to rush over there.
Nope, I got an update on the grant.
Might as well do it now.
Yeah, so today, um, I've been in touch with Corey Steiner, Brooklyn Gas, about putting in a joint grant to, uh, the Bergen Foundation. And we're gonna schedule a meeting, um, with, with you at Bergen Foundation and us to discuss how the joint application would look. But the money that the state has came from a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant from the Bergen Foundation. So we have to get clarity from, the Bergen Foundation wants clarity on why the state can't give us part of the hundred and forty thousand and why we would have to reapply back in. Why can't we just take the money? So we've kinda gotta get some collaborative effort here between D P I, R Republic, Brooklyn Gas, to, and the Bergen Foundation to decide who is going to pay for the certain portions. And so there's a little difference out there, but I think it'll be positive in the end. Cause I think the state really wants this to go forward.
Okay? Anything else? Alright, so, um, anything else? Any other questions about that, Mike? So I'm gonna keep my tradition going. I'm gonna ask for a motion to accept. Are you a question? I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't see you, didn't see you. Go ahead.
Um, so I'm just gonna open the elements in the room and, um, just saying that I think the board needs to look at its options. Because when we hire a teacher that is now not teaching, we heard that on the assumption, um, the, part of the motion was that she's faultless. Um, I just think we need to know what our options are.
With regard to that. I would be fine to discuss staff matters, but the licensure, she's faultless. Fault type, five to twelve. I, I'm, I don't, I don't.
So I say issue we need to resolve, so we don't wanna discuss it right now. We'll, 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 we appreciate your, your concern. Appreciate your concern, so. Anything else? Any notes, Dr.? See, again, can I have a motion to accept her report? Second? Okay, probably move a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Mr. Haas?
First time doing it. I've got it all uploaded. I wasn't quite sure what everyone was looking for, but, uh, doing the question down.
Tell us on your first, um, just give us a little, um. I have a pretty, I, I can't take on Mr. Haas, but, cause I've known him for so long and I'm doing a quick bit of that.
There's a lot of.
But just tell us, what is?